First order of business is roll call. Can you call us in, Gail, please?
Sure. Brian?
Here.
Sean?
Here.
Tyler's absent. We'll bring him in as soon as we can. Kim?
Here.
And John?
Here.
First order of business is to approve the agenda. Entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion on the agenda? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Stand's approved. Public forum, is there anyone that would like to speak at public forum? Jim, or yours?
I'd like to speak here. I see on your agenda tonight you have the open enroll matrix. And I know you've had at least one request during the course of the year to look at employee benefit. It might affect that. I can empathize with the problem employees can face. Over the years, I think we probably have lost one or two good candidates. Because although they were going to get a raise to come here, it was overwhelmed by the cost of housing here. But I also know that over the course of history, the district has been challenged on its open enrollment policy by people that were denied. And that's been upheld. And I hope that if you do consider something, that you be sure and check through with your attorney. Because I'd hate to have something that stood in good stead go haywire, even if it's with good intentions. The second thing I'd like to address is, and I have no idea if you're just going to review and approve what you currently have, but I know in the past, there has been temptation at times to try and tweak or do slight manipulations with the open enrollment matrix to try and deal with short-term general fund pain because the state hasn't come through. And I would caution you, I have now moved into, I think what is position of most people in the district are, I'm an older person with no kids that go to school here. You've got a lot of us that have strong feelings for the school. And I think that's one of the reasons that although the tax rate remains one of the 20 highest in the state year after year after year, my guess is you don't get a lot of complaints about that. And I don't think that you probably will. But with all the concern that you've gone through as you looked ahead at how you might spend money on new buildings, on how fast enrollment's going to increase, I urge you to take caution in perhaps accelerating that problem and coming up with a situation where people would say, well, we're just building buildings for a lot of kids whose parents don't even pay taxes here. I've never heard that. But I'd hate to see it come to that. And the only way it could is if you would have a lot more open enrollment than you currently have. Believe me, I understand open enrollment is a two-edged sword. Because you've got people going out too. And you need to at least cover those people. But I would just urge you to move with caution as you look at that. It appears to me you've made good stewards with the district's money, just like all the boards that have worked previous to you. And I think that's why people have a lot of faith in what you do with the budget. And I commend you for that, other than anything else.
Yeah, we had at the open, or at some of the sessions we had, I know a few of you were there, Jim, but we did have extensive discussions on the ideas, is if you have the room and then you have the open enrollment. But if you have to build for that open enrollment, you have two different financial decisions there. So I fully understand those comments and think they're good comments. Any questions?
Would you like to hear a board?
Is there anyone else that would like to speak at the public forum? I would like to introduce Chris Shives with the Jump Rope for Heart. And he has a celebration for you.
Absolutely. Thank you. My name is Chris Shives. I'm the Regional Vice President for the American Heart Association. And I appreciate giving me a couple minutes of your time today. So I came to do two things. Number one is acknowledge and then appreciate one of your teachers and obviously your students at Gilbert Elementary and Intermediate School. So Ms. Clackey is a wonderful volunteer for the Heart Association. So you may or may not know, but this generation of kids are expected to live five less years than their parents. So it's a nasty combination of decreased physical activity and poor nutrition. That's kind of led to this trend. So American Heart Association is working every day to reach our 2020 impact goal, which is reducing death by 20% while improving the health of all Americans by 20%. So we've done major advancements in saving lives, but it's the changing lives we've struggled. So one out of three kids are obese, two out of three aren't getting enough physical activity. And then, you know, kids are getting half the fruits and vegetables that they need. But it's because of volunteers like Ms. Clackey that are helping us save and change lives. So during Jump Rope for Heart this year, she taught the kids the importance of getting 60 minutes of physical activity every day, to stay away from tobacco, to reduce sodium, to eat more fruits and vegetables, and then to choose water over sugary drinks. So I know this is only reinforcing the message she shares every day as I've got to witness her in class during some of the days I've stopped by here. So we just want to show our appreciation by the American Heart Association. Gilbert Elementary and Elementary combined raised five times the state average in the dollars that they raised, which obviously is going to fund the mission, so hopefully saving more lives. But then the changing lives, just what she's able to do to share that heart-helping message that she's doing. And right now, we've got a few more events happening, but right now, it's the number seven event in the whole entire state of Iowa. So I just want to present her with a certificate of appreciation and make sure you guys note that.
Any questions, I guess, from the board? Thank you very much. And thank you for all your hard work.
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you so much.
This is Tyler.
Hi, Tyler. This is Gail. We are bringing you into the meeting. We've just finished up with the forum. And we are starting with a presentation. It's 3.02.
Great, thank you.
Or yours, Mr. Court?
Do you have a remote here for?
Just to mirror the screens.
But my machine should be here. Does that change when you leave? I just want to stand up and I'll introduce you here in a minute. My name is Mike Court. I teach sixth grade science at the middle school. I think I know everyone. And Chris Billings asked if I would be willing to bring a group over to share a presentation that was a final presentation for a STEM unit that we had implemented this spring. So these guys are excited to present. And we had to kind of dust off the note cards and that from a presentation and work that was done about a month and a half ago. So they were willing to work hard all week to kind of go back through the whole thing and so on. But before I introduce them and have them present, I just want to touch base on a couple of things. That's the wrong copy. Hang on. As you know, STEM is an initiative that's been ongoing across the country and state for better part of the decade. It's an acronym that stands for Science, Technology, Engineering, and Math. I just wanted to summarize a couple of brief examples of how in this unit, we are addressing all four of those components. So first of all, the science part in this, and this is a unit that was produced by the Society of Automotive Engineers. And it's called a World in Motion Motorized Toy Car. And in this unit, students receive an RFP letter from a fictitious company asking for design proposals to help with a new line of toys. And so that's kind of how it gets started. But of course, in STEM units, the science piece is there. I mean, we're full of things like asking good driving questions and making observations, collecting data. Some of the topics come in involve forces, torque versus speed in terms of mechanical advantage, learning about gears and how gears work. That was a big part of it. The technology, you'll see a lot of that in this final presentation. But everything from graphic design and branding, the company, the survey data that was collected. And we use spreadsheets to actually learn how to make graphs using Google spreadsheet. The slideshow that you'll see here, importing videos, importing images, scanning documents, a lot of those things going on. And of course, just working with gears. Gears doesn't seem like technology, but really it is. It's a type of simple machine that we use all the time in our daily lives. The engineering piece comes in with the RFP letter that, and you should have that in your packet. Maybe you've read through that. But that was the big, like, driving question that they had to respond to in the PBL unit and so forth. Elements of conceptual design, the whole engineering process, what's studied, the creation of prototypes, designing cars to meet performance standards. Those are some of the engineering components. And then, of course, with math, data collection, analysis, the graphing data, gear ratios, and things like that. So I just want to make a quick comment too, that a lot of our PBL units, teachers are creating from scratch. But it doesn't always work that way. This is actually a STEM unit that was produced by, as I said, the Society of Automotive Engineers. And over the last several years, I've reframed this unit using, first of all, AIW, and we were really pushing on that. And then again with project-based learning. So I just think it's important for the board to know that some PBL units are big flashy units with big showcases at the end. They're not always cross-curricular with the whole grade level getting involved. Sixth grade teachers actually have been implementing several units on their own as well as the ones that we do across the team. So in regard to the other document I gave you, which was that PBL rubric that had some of those things, you're going to see examples all through here, you know, meeting the standards. Of course, we look at the engineering standards and the science standards from the Iowa Forum, Next Generation Science Standards. I already talked about the driving question with the RFP letter and the performance standards that were mentioned in the documents you had. Sustained inquiry happens through the engineering process. So you'll see examples of that here tonight. One of the big changes I made this year was involving the authenticity. And in AIW, we call that value beyond school. And we invited in some expert judges to evaluate our work. There were 40 presentations over the course of two days. And those judges were engineers from Iowa State in Aerospace Engineering, Christina Blobom, Benjamin Quaza. We had people from the DOT, Lisa McDaniel and Jerry Rochi are engineers there. Marcia Dees works in business and marketing. We also had Sandra Goff, who was involved in animal science. Reynolds Kramer, who's the CEO of Fairway Foods. So we have people that are familiar with presentations and gave kids both positive and how to be better. So that kind of sets up the framework for tonight. I'll let you guys introduce yourselves. Why don't you check and make sure your remote is working, Josh, for your start? All right, good. Here we go.
Our company is Geeky Gazing, fixing problems so you can be awesome. Our group is made up of three students. Me, Joshua Willem.
Me, Eric Simpson.
And me, Julian Bucel. We had group roles in order to know what to accomplish and who would do it. I was the group leader, mathematician, and lead conceptual designer.
I was the technology specialist and inventory parts manager.
I was the communication specialist and the lead constructional engineer.
This is our car, the Speedy Mobile. Later in our proposal, you will learn how we decided to make our car look like this.
So in order to successfully build our car, we had to have a system. Otherwise, we would have wasted time arguing about what to do and who would do it. So we used the engineering process. First, we identified the problem. The problem was that Mobility Toys Inc. needed cars for a new line of toys, the Global Ranger line. Our company thought that we should begin to create a new toy car. Second, we did some research to know how to build it. We learned about car chassis and all the parts that we could use to build our car. Next, we identified the standards this toy would need to pass. Then we brainstormed, evaluated, and later made a plan. We used our plan to create a prototype. If it went well, we communicated the results. But if not, we went back to the drawing board. The engineering process was extremely helpful, so we later used it in the million car body.
So here is the conceptual design view of our final car body. Here we have a side view showing the gears and another side view where it's the Speedy Mobile. On the front, we have our logo and the license plate, so you can tell it is ours. And finally, we have little Speedy mascot in the back. In order to build our car body, we had to have a plan. These are the basic steps. These are the basic steps we took to build our body. First, we measured the brain. Second, we made a cardboard base out of an old sturdy old folder. Then we covered the base with duct tape. Finally, we added our stuffed dog, Nuskut Little Speedy, and we also added paw prints. In order to build our car successfully, we had to learn about the chassis. This is the conceptual design of the chassis from two different angles, the front top view and the side view. We learned the importance of rubber collars and axle cushions. They both help keep the axles in place, so they won't maneuver properly. Without them, the axles would move freely in the holes that they were placed in. So next, we began to work on the standards mentioned in the request proposal letter that we received. The standards we accomplished were the speed standard and the 30-degree slope standard. Both were equally challenging, but we persisted to reach a solution. Our first standard was the speed standard. In order to pass the speed standard, our car had to travel 3 meters in 3 seconds or less. Here's a video. This is the gear pattern for the speed standard. It has a 3:1 gear ratio because the 15-toothed gear here is driver, driving forward, right?
So here's the conceptual design of the gear pattern for the speed standard. And we had a 15-toothed gear on the motor which powered the car. And the 45-toothed gear was drove by the 15-toothed gear on the motor. And that was on the axle, so it allowed the car to move. And the arrows on the wheels show which direction the car is moving. And then here's the side view of the car. So the gears are actually on the same axle as the wheel, so you can't really see it when the car is moving. So here's an expanded version with the drag collar and the rubber collar.
Our second standard was the slope standard. In order to pass the slope standard, our car had to travel 30 degrees slope for 1 meter. Here's a link.
This gear pattern, the one we used for the speed standard, but it had a 15:1 gear ratio because the 15-toothed gear on the motor drove a 75-toothed gear. And on top of that 75-toothed gear was a 15-toothed gear which drove another 75-toothed gear. And that 75-toothed gear drove a 45-toothed gear on the axle which allowed the car to move.
Here we have the side view conceptual design. And this is what the gear pattern looked on our car. And this is the gear train or the gear pattern pull apart. Now we will show you our survey data from the car body survey we conducted a month ago.
So we surveyed a total of 15 adults and 15 children. We had more vehicle choices than this, but only three were selected. And we made separate charts for our target audience, girls age 6 to 10. So we charted what vehicle type young girls would like to see in a new toy. So as you can see, the majority selected a car versus a boat or a bike.
Next, we collected the individual data for colors. When we began this project, our group decided we would have the car in three colors. Two winners were blue and green, but there was a tie for third, with their color between black, red, and purple.
So we decided to look at the color data for all age groups. We discovered that black and red were still tied for third place. So we decided to compromise. We would use blue, green, and red as main colors with black paw prints.
When we conducted survey data for animal-themed car, girls aged 6 to 10, we had a six-way tie between dolphin, cat, unicorn, narwhal, porcupine, and lion. Once again, we decided we'll get the data from all our age groups to make our final design. To our surprise, one-third of all people we surveyed wanted a dog-themed car. So we began to work on a blue, green, red, and black dog-themed car. This was our final design.
So in summary, our car, the Speedy Mobile, has many features that our group is proud of. First of all, we used our survey data to create a vehicle that includes what the people want, which will make demand of the toy increase. Secondly, we met two standards, the speed standard and the 30-degree slope standard. And finally, despite our differences, we worked together and we never gave up. So in closing, our company, Geek the Gears Inc., would greatly like to see Mobility Toys Incorporated select our Speedy Mobile for the Global Ranger line of toys.
Thank you so much for your time. We hope you consider our proposal.
Does the board have any questions for either the group or myself before we head?
When can we buy one?
We haven't gotten to the manufacturing part. Maybe that's something to update for next year.
How did you guys take the surveys?
Well, the question was how do we take the surveys? And we took them because we created a Google Forms and we printed them out for young, senior kids that we gave them to the boss and for the adults.
And can you explain how we view that data when you get back? What document do we look at when we look at all the data when it comes in? Do you remember?
So the Google Forms, they have like a different tab where you can go and it has all the data already in a graph, except for some of them with the paper copies. We just went to spreadsheets and we made a separate graph.
In the Google Forms, you can view a spreadsheet also. So you can just select certain data and create graphs that way.
Very cool.
I'd like to compliment you with that is a very great project. Tell me about how this, how did this project feel versus some of the ones where you don't have to collaborate like you did? Was the collaboration a good thing? Or tell us a little bit about how the collaboration went for you.
Do you feel that you work well together?
Did it get better the longer you went on with your collaboration? Did you start to learn that?
It didn't work very well. But as we kept going, it got better.
You know, as a teacher, you know, I've done projects like this both ways, where students get to pick groups and sometimes teachers pick groups. Usually with a bigger one like this, I like to establish what the groups would be for various reasons. I look at a whole lot of factors when putting that together. But part of that, that you saw in the presentation about group roles, we really try to emphasize establishing roles where everyone kind of knows where they need to be a leader and things they need to look after in the work that's done. This unit went on for how long? Maybe five weeks, six weeks?
Yeah.
It's pretty lengthy, you know. And that's a point to bring up about project-based learning. If we did project-based learning with everything, we'd probably cover about four or five topics during the year. And of course, there's not time to do that. But you know, there's other good pedagogy out there to help kids learn and so on.
Thank you very much. Very good presentation, too.
Thank you.
2016, 2017 priorities.
There it is.
Thanks, Mike.
Thanks.
You can kind of take a look at the priorities that are listed up there. Is there any of the administrators that want to speak towards any of the ones that you have returned? Or I should say, maybe are there any of the board members that would like to ask any questions about the ones that are turned?
This is Tyler. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yep. Just curious on any updates on the last section on culture of continuous learning. I'm just looking at what was in the packet, whether any comments there on any of those.
Well, like, so for example, Lindsay met with me for our evaluation. And one of the things I've worked on this year, this is Stacy, by the way, Tyler.
Hi.
One of my professional, my professional goals this year was to continue my growth and some things with dyslexia. And as you know, we've had our parents who had come to a meeting earlier. And we really worked as a district in a building on kind of how to build some bridges and some relationship with our communication and our dyslexia plan and what we're doing. And so we kind of talked through some of that and that task force progress that we've made, I guess, with the task force. And we have a meeting again, probably will be the last for this school year on Thursday. It's kind of the culmination of some of, one of, I guess, the last big chunks that we really wanted to have as a learning piece as this group, which is having Wendy Robinson from Heartland DEA come and really talk about, okay, so you have a diagnosis of dyslexia. What does that mean in terms of a 504 plan or an IEP? And so that's been a big conversation point for us. So that's kind of my learning goal and some things that we've been doing.
You bet. And if you remember, that's one of the ones that, there's a group that came to the board meeting, wanted to talk about some of the things and what we were doing for dyslexia. And this task force has been an outstanding group that I think has allowed us to look at us at that overall as far as elementary through high school. Tim, is there anything that you want to add to the coaching portion of that one? I know that you've been working with your coaches as far as the different things there and the PD and overall. Anything you want to add?
Justin will plan on continuing this in the next school year. We'll probably have at least two days that we'll do as a school as well as the two days that we will do as a conference for a total of four during the year that our coaches will be able to work on some professional development. And we're working on, the athletic directors are meeting on Wednesday to start the plan for next year.
And when you meet with them, Tim, you also do some of the expectations, is that right? That you have for coaches? I know that's kind of rolled into your PD portion of it.
Yes, absolutely it is.
You bet. Anyone else that would like to add anything?
Just really quickly, I was going to say, we met our reading goal this year and that was a possibility. But what we have determined is that- But what we have determined is that in order for us to consistently perform the way we want to and accomplish the things we need to, we feel like we have to designate a time to be doing our multi-tiered systems of support, our interventions, whether that's for talented and gifted students, for music students, for reading, for math, for kids that need to get other skills. And so what we have determined to do for next year, we've been working on this the last few times, actually as a result of the things we talked about in regard to this plan up here, we determined we're going to set aside thirty minutes. It's going to be called tighter time. It is very similar to what they do in the intermediate and elementary school. We resisted that because we didn't want to lose class time, but we feel like with the requirements that are being put in place and some of the interventions that we need to deliver and this idea that we've got to meet the needs of lots of different students, we decided this would be the best way to do it. And so we've actually gone and talked to several different schools to see how they do it. We went and talked to our intermediate, our elementary. We feel like we've come up with a really good plan for next year to deliver interventions to every kid in our building. And just to give you some exciting ones, our talented and gifted teacher has determined that she's going to use that time to do some of the things they didn't get to this year in their exploratory period. Our new choir teacher, Chris Johnson, wants to do reading of music in special groups during that time. Our ESL teacher wants to do vocabulary and language instruction with our kids that are struggling with speaking English. And I could just go on and on and on about that. But I think it'll be a very productive half hour. What I've tried to do with teachers is just really emphasize that is precious time. If we're going to give up five minutes per period for this intervention time, then we've got to use it wisely. Every kid has to get something that's meaningful, and that's a big challenge. So anyway, that's what we've been doing for our last two or three times based on some of the results we talked about up here.
Still, that'll be every day then?
That'll be every day, yep. And three of the days will be the intervention, and then one day will be reteaching. So if kids didn't get something, they're going to do reteaching during that time around our standards-based grading. And then Friday will be homework completion. And any middle school principal can attest to you that homework completion is a valuable use of time. That's the struggle that we have at the middle school levels. That's more than you needed to know.
No, that's great. That's great. That's good stuff.
Any other questions with regard to the district priorities from the board? Administrative reports? We have the Career and Technical Education Advisory Council.
But usually, there's someone that's here from the CTE group, but I guess we don't have anyone here tonight that will be speaking to you. Hopefully, you've had a chance to take a look at this. What they do, and Lainey, you might have to help me out, because they meet during the year, is that correct, on different times to kind of put together some of their thoughts and what they would advise for this coming to the board? Is that correct?
Yep. They meet among themselves as teachers, but they also invite the community, and they have different people that represent the community as part of that. And involve them in, and then that, they make recommendations also. There's within CTE, there's, I'm trying to remember exactly, I think it's six elements that are recorded to be in CTE. And so they make two of them each year and concentrate on those and make those a priority for that year to make sure they're, they are accomplishing those to the way the state wants them to do. Now, CTE is in the midst of a lot of discussion as well for the future and what's that going to, what is that going to look like? And so it's, so far, it's looking close to the same in disrespect with just our CTE programs here, but it continues to be discussed.
You can kind of see as Gail's scrolling through the different things, it'll show you the meeting dates and some of the things that they've had from this. If you had an opportunity to be at the high school ag education planning group, I think that we saw quite a few of the CTE group that came to that meeting also, when we were talking about the ag building and things along that line. But this is, again, just, they wanted to make sure that you had an opportunity, you don't have to take any action on this, other than the fact that they wanted to make sure that you had some awareness of what they've been meeting on and their recommendations as far as different things. And I know that I've had a chance not to talk to every CTE instructor, but to a few of them about some of the different things.
I'll just add, the National Career Readiness Certificate Program is a program that Mrs. Appley put into place. They've been talking to us for a while. Just basically is another form of getting them ready for a career and make sure they're prepared for that and are bringing in people to talk to them about each career in that class and as part of the MLC program. But also, they take a survey so that they can see where they fit in and what that looks like and where they might be talented to work in the future. That's one of those elements that goes into that.
And Lainey alluded to the fact that there are a lot of changes out there right now in CTE. And they talked about Carl Perkins money and how that's going to be distributed and what's going to happen with CTE overall. And I think that there's, like, it is a lot of different things right now. There's a lot of flux, if you want to say, about what will be happening and how this will all play out. And we've been trying to attend meetings and make sure that we are there, whether it be with an administrator, with a CTE person. I think maybe even Kerry has some, you know, not information, but they talk about it at the curriculum meetings that you're at, too. So again, just trying to stay up on what's happening and keep everyone informed.
This looks like the Perkins friends are going to stay in place for at least another year, hopefully not for that. And that's about a little over ninety thousand. And we pass that around to different programs within it, and then they buy things that they need to stay for.
Thank you, Lainey. Is there any questions from the board regarding the CTE program? Announcements and celebrations?
Does have anything that you wanted to throw out for announcements or celebrations?
Elementary school just currently held a food drive last week as part of fifth-grade social community service learning PBL. And we, our goal is to collect as much or more as last year, which was fourteen hundred items, and we collected one thousand four hundred nineteen items. But it's been great. The fifth grade is really taking it on, they're sorting it, and they chose, they researched some food pantries and chose three places to donate to Backpack Buddies, excuse me, Gilbert Lutheran Loves the Fishes in Stewart City and Bethesda Lutheran, they have a food pantry there also. So they will actually then help go deliver those items, which was a great experience for those kids to see what that's like and that's how families get their food. So it was a fun, fun week.
There's two areas in the leadership team goals that have been met this year, and they create smart goals every year, and each of our teachers get involved with one of these that they select. One is policies and procedures. They've been working hard on our current recovery and what that's going to look like and basically some specific policy that we haven't had in place for a while. And it has been determined, it doesn't have to be on board policy, but it will go on our handbook for next year. And basically, it looks at when they can take it, when they can do part of it, when they can have to do the whole course. Things like if you're at fifty percent or above, you can basically recover the course up to that sixty percent passing and get a D minus on doing that work. But if it's below fifty percent, then you have to retake the course using ingenuity in that case. And so it goes into detail just on each of those scenarios, and it's something that we have in place that probably should have been in place a year ago or two years ago when we started this year, but now it's in place thanks to the policies and the procedures committee. I appreciate that, and that's just one of the big things that has been done there. The other thing is with the scheduling committee, where they put in place, basically trying to make our schedule a little simpler, as I know most high school parents would say, yes, we'd like that. And part of that was looking at making the, we already have the Monday, Tuesday, I mean, Monday, Tuesday, Friday schedule the same, but the Wednesday and Thursday schedule is different. So by doing it a little bit differently, we, they were able to create a schedule that basically is the same on Wednesday and Thursday exactly. So we really only have two schedules, the Monday, Tuesday, Friday, and the Wednesday, Thursday schedule now. Now, one trade-off is that, of that, which is a good thing in the end, is that during, when we have the collaboration on Wednesday, then we have Success Center on Thursday. That Success Center won't be as attended by seniors because that's the end of the day and they have senior privilege and stuff. But that's in a way good, that we have just a younger classroom, classmate in there. And we, there's some good qualities to that as well and just giving seniors more privilege in that respect. And then also looking at, is there a point where we let all seniors go for that or even maybe all juniors at some point where they get out a little early if they are in good standing academically? And looking at that as just another motivator for doing well. But the big thing that it really does, as those other variables were put in place, the big thing that it does is make it consistent so that on Wednesday and Thursday, we have the exact same schedule each day, and that simplifies the schedule. So I applaud all those leadership teams for what they've done.
Thanks, Lainey. Any other items for celebration?
Yeah, I would like to celebrate that our boys' and girls' track teams are both conference champions, as well as our boys' golf team, and that our girls' golf team was runner-up.
I'm going to throw one out, and this is kind of an odd one, but I had an opportunity to go to Anastasia's building the other day. And the kindergartners, what they did was they built these little structures, and we, about noon, we went out into the, by the driveway there, and they have little bears that they have in these structures. And they had to explain to you how that this bear was going to be in the shape. Now, I don't know if you've ever had an opportunity to sit and talk to a kindergartner about a structure and how they got those in the shape, but I'll tell you what, it was a great time. So thank you, kindergarten teachers, for letting me do that. It really was. I greatly appreciate that.
You can see the pictures on the website. That was the culmination of their PBL and kindergarten.
Another thing that we'd like to do during announcements or celebrations is to recognize the school board, month of May is school board recognition week, or month, excuse me. And we'd like to recognize you for all the work that you do. So Brian Anderson?
Thank you, sir.
Sean Barber? Tyler, we got a certificate here that we'll get to you when you get back. Jim Mosman?
Good, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
And John Nelson. Let's give him a round of applause.
Next order of business is board reports. Is there any board reports we'd like to have? Tyler, do you want to give a, any talk on the long-term priorities?
Well, I think if Sam or John are there to talk about the proposal, they give an update, but we completed all five of the forums for the public. And I think that those were beneficial, both for those that attended, but also just the questions and continued feedback to the process. It's my understanding that the first wave of the phase two meetings are done and that Hala will now go back with that information and be working with the administrative team on a little more detail before they go back to those groups. So it's my expectation we'll see a proposal from Hala with a little more detail on the phase two, but the forums went well, and I think we're now moving into the phase two of this planning.
Sam is nodding his head.
Hey there, Tyler.
Very good. I'll just leave it at that. Sam can add in whatever when he gets to present.
Any other board reports?
Kind of one thing, sorry, it's maybe like in the celebration category. I went to the fifth grade classrooms. Tyler went to at a different time, and we got to hear a presentation from these fifth grade students, like on a sort of a book report. It's been a long project. It's kind of with reading this book and going on field trips. And lastly, like what we saw this week was they built the, either a game, a newscast, or
A brochure?
Or a brochure, thank you, on essentially kind of talking about the themes and topics of this book. So I got to sit and listen to three different groups present, and I played the game, the board game with them around this book, Hatchet, which is a survival story I think everyone in Iowa gets to read. I'm reading it now, too, because I was intrigued by the games I played, but I thought it was really killer, like to see these students get so excited about these board games. Some of them were horrible. I mean, they were like really good work, everybody. No, like they just like, you know, they weren't like thinking about a little pieces and their little brains were going. And so they're, we were like playtesting it as sort of like a first draft. So it was really fun. I don't know if there's going to be like a final presentation for any of these kids, but that was a part of, that was a part of Mrs. Danielson's class. I don't know what other classes were doing it or how that worked, but it was phenomenal.
So they're spending some time now this week revising?
Some of them maybe need more revisions than others, but it was really, it was really great.
Thank you, Brian. Moving along to the third reading of the amended board policy, 103 long-term priorities. Went back to well with the idea of this may need some rework, so don't feel obligated with this. But part of the thought process was, this last board meeting, we had four committees. So this board meeting, we narrowed it down to one committee. The one primary inserted the annual goal paragraph, and then we thought that in order to get better coordination with the board and administration, that this would be a role that the vice president of the board would take on each year, so that we would have the communication between the board and administration that now you know this is the person you communicate with regard to long-term priorities and annual goals. Not set on it, it was, it was one of the things that Ames Community School Districts does, and so that was, that's one of the things to throw out there tonight, but if we have different plans, that's okay, too. But I thought that that would at least give some definition to what that process looks like. And I know that over the course of the last year or so, you know, that was kind of what we were shooting for. So if anybody has any comments on any of that, not married to any of it, so this is still in the draft phases. So if any of the administrators or anybody has, any of the board members has comments on this, it's still a working draft, and we just want to have it, have that clarity so that we're all kind of on the same page with regard to long-term planning and annual goals. So feel free to mark it up. It's kind of where we're at in that process.
Any comments administering team-wise?
Six times a charm, right?
Yeah.
Are you there, Tyler?
Tyler?
Yes.
The only thing I see is under the annual goal, it says during the other three years, the long-term priorities are not being reduced. I would think that we would do annual goals every year, correct?
Oh, that's correct. Yeah, that needs to be fixed.
Right?
Right.
So it's just on the fourth year when there is long-term priority, that's kind of double duty, but I would think there'd be annual goals every year.
Yeah, yeah. Well, we'll wordsmith that and get that corrected because that is
I like the way it's laid out. It's fairly simple, so that's good.
Any other comments?
Can we approve with that?
Make that amendment and approve it with that amendment.
All right. I'll entertain a motion.
Certainly.
Have a second.
A second?
Further discussion. All favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Stand by.
Any minute.
The next one that we have is the second reading on the wellness policy. I think I told you last month, what we've been doing is we were able to get a grant. We've been working with a wellness coach that is also a nutritionist. She has helped our school, along with other schools throughout the state, to put this into the proper guidelines as far as what the state is wanting. And this is after we've had a chance to meet with her, we've had a chance to meet with Joni from the Food Service, we've had a chance to meet with our Wellness Committee. This is the second reading on the wellness policy, and would ask for your approval that we could go ahead and put this one in the books.
Entertain a motion to approve the wellness policy. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Stands approved? Thank you. Review the APR goals from SIAC, Austin Wooden or Oh, hey, it's a man. You're on, same. You're on, same.
Okay, great. So, wanted to walk through the proposal that was in your board packet, that's associated with this, as Tyler referred to, the next phase of work, of which we've already began, actually completed some of the things, but, so, and you also have received, I delivered tonight, the district facilities study plan, and so a lot of this proposed work is referencing that pack or that booklet. It's dated in February, which is when we actually completed it, however, we didn't want to print off the final deliverable, final copy until we heard back from some of the, or until we conducted some of the public forums, and so we were able to refine it just slightly. So, there's a couple minor modifications in there regarding some terminology that is more appropriate pertaining to some of the work, and also the schedules, and so that's, you'll see some minor differences there in what you received in February with what the final draft is. So, with that, I just wanted to review a handful of things with this, with the proposal that you have in front of you, the process, the deliverables, and then talk about the fees just briefly. And so the process that we've gone through, now that we're in the second phase of the work, the first part of it was, we had, we conducted multiple meetings with district patrons this past spring, actually, we just wrapped those up on May 3rd, we were going to have seven different groups to share what the initial findings were of the Phase One of the district study, so that was conducted. We also conducted five separate public forums where the entire district was invited, once again, to offer an update and overview of the process up to this point, and also the process going forward, so those were, I think, were beneficial, and those were wrapped up, actually, a week ago, Saturday. One of the things that we're embarking upon right now are preliminary concept designs with updated cost opinions. Now, the Phase One, or the Facility Master Plan, we've done some preliminary work, and we had enough information to offer what we would call preliminary cost opinions, and so this next phase, the glut of the work which you're embarking on now, is diving deeper into that work, as Tyler mentioned, meeting with the administration, and adding more detail to the specific projects associated with that, are detailed cost opinions of that work. So when that process is done, we will, of course, be providing board updates, we're actually scheduled to provide three board updates in July, September, and October. Also in the middle of this process, we'd like to have the second round of meetings with the district patrons, once again, kind of keeping the district and the community involved in the process, and offering them some of the, once again, this second round of meetings for sharing with them our most recent work, and also reactions from the board at that point as well with the group. And the last step in this process, so if the district decides to proceed with a bond referendum in 2018, we would offer our services to create posters, flyers, different types of communiques that would be sent out and used by the district to help inform the district of the bond referendum process, and we'd also avail ourselves to help with those presentations, so giving an overview of the projects, cost opinions, thinking through what the implications would be on taxes, as much as we can offer. I know that Piper Jeffrey folks would be associated with those presentations as well. So those are the six, those are the six steps in the process. Regarding deliverables, so preparation materials and printing and Dallas, those provide five public forums, creation and initial preliminary design schemes, creating drawings, floor plans, site plans, exterior elevations where necessary. Number three, providing detailed cost opinions of that work, and ultimately providing a recommendation prioritization list, working with the board and with the staff on what, on how, what the order of those projects should be over the next several years. And ultimately, then lastly, in terms of deliverables, in November, we anticipate creating those flyers and the posters for the presentations for public information for the bond referendum. So that then takes us to the fee schedule, and we have it broken down into two columns. Actually, there's three columns there, but two columns representing the fees. So on the left is a description of those different processes, okay, one through six, which I just mentioned earlier. And so the two columns on the right, then how we broke down the fees would be, essentially, some of the work, the first three steps, actually, I'm sorry, the first two steps, that work is complete in terms of the meetings with district patrons, as well as the public forums, and that tallied up to $16,000. Step three, while we would embark on that work right away, and that would go through through now, and essentially through October, when the process is over, we would credit that, those fees toward, for the future projects. So even though we'll be doing some of the preliminary design work and cost opinion generation for those future projects, we wouldn't charge for it until those projects turn into reality. Now, there's some frank print associated with that, but essentially, as it says, fees credited toward future projects, so we wouldn't be expecting that payment immediately. And then the final four steps in terms of board updates, follow-up meetings with patrons, and pre-bond issue services, that will be carried out in October, November, actually, in January through February, as that fees are accrued. So that gives you kind of an overview of some of the work we've done up to today, and that we're kind of in the middle of, and the fees and schedule associated with that. So, any questions or comments?
I have a question. So, a few board meetings ago, we elected to go start with the option one, essentially as known new elementary school upfront, and instead do some investment in the current elementary school. At the same time, like, there's sort of been this ongoing discussion of like, well, how much work and not, you know, what sort of is the timeline of all that stuff? And you said that's gonna be, those conversations will primarily be happening leading up to November, sort of that's in that, those discussions as to essentially like, how much to invest in the elementary school? That conversation, you'll kind of guide us through late summer, early fall, is that right?
Yeah, that's correct. So as we dive in a little bit deeper to what those specific projects will be, we'll have a much more clear picture on the specific costs of those, okay? And then we'll be able to say, okay, where's the cap? Where do we want to stop spending on the elementary school particularly? Or does it warrant some more, and then we shift some dollars away if we choose to do so? So, it'll be a working process with you, the board, and the administration on where those dollars should actually land, and it'll be based on the priority list that was developed during the first phase of the work. And so that will always be kind of something to be backed against, and use the background for discussion. But yeah, it's a working process, and it will work with all the groups and arrive at those numbers collectively, so you guys will be constantly up to speed on where it comes out. Thank you.
Any other questions for Sam? Thank you, Sam.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Would you like me to stick around for anything else, or?
Nope. I can't afford you. The annual progress report, Austin Wooden, heard that.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Dyer.
Well, let me just go on record to say I thought we just used the Capri jeans.
My Capri's don't fit. I guess I'm starting, so, we'll start, you see it in front of you, but we'll quick review last year's goals and just bring you up to speed on where those came in. So, starting with the reading goal for last year, our goal was to, you know, increase the percentage of students in seventh grade scoring proficient or higher in their reading assessments, and you can see as of sixth graders, they're at 86.8%, and flash forward here to the results, at seventh graders, they're at 96.7%. So, not only was there an improvement from proficient and better, but man, 86 to 96 is pretty amazing, so, I should round it up, we'll call it 87 to 97, sounds even better. So for math, the goal, of course, once again, was to increase that percentage of students proficient or higher for ninth graders, and as eighth graders, the previous year, they're at 92.3, which was a great score, at 92.3, but you can see they did meet that goal, so they actually went from 92.3 to 94.4. So once again, good results there on a number that you would have thought would have been pretty hard to move anyway. Science, this one, the, once again, was to increase the percentage of students, this time for third grade, scoring proficient or higher. As second graders, last year, they were at 86.8, and as third graders, they scored 96.5. So, 86.8 to 96.5, another really impressive jump there, to say the least. Social studies was to increase the percentage of students in fifth grade scoring proficient or higher. As fourth graders, they're at 89.7, once again, is a great score as fourth graders, and they moved that clear up to 94.7. So, 89.7 to 94.7, another impressive improvement there. And then early literacy goal, you'll see they're actually taking the tests this week, so the results aren't in yet, and I don't think we even have down what they were previously, so we'll have to, I'm sure you'll get that report at a later date. But that summarizes last year's. Pretty impressive.
Yeah, it's great work by everybody.
Yeah, and it's always neat to sit in that meeting and hear all the different things that the schools are doing to make that happen. It definitely doesn't happen on accident. And I'll point out, I remember last year having a long discussion about the freshman English teacher, yeah, but, or not, yeah, do you teach her the goal?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, I guess so. 87 to 97 was a pretty good jump.
Okay, so I have some of the recommendations from that school improvement advisory committee for next year's goals, because this is not good enough, right? We're going even farther. So, for reading, and I'm kind of reading this a little bit backwards, but for reading, the fourth readers this year, 93.7% of the students scored proficient or above in the Iowa assessments, and for the next year, we're going to track them as fifth graders and increase that percentage. So, we're going to try to increase from fourth grade to fifth grade from 93.7%. For math, we looked at the ninth graders this year, 94.4% of the students scored proficient or above, and we are going to be tracking them in 10th grade to improve that even higher than that. Let's see, science, okay, so the seventh graders this year, 94.2% of the students were proficient or above in science, and our goal is to track them in eighth grade to increase that from 94 to 120 or something like that. That's impressive, though. I mean, geez, 94. Social studies, by the end of 2017, oh, now I'm reading this straight on, so, back up, as sixth graders now, this year, 88.8% of students scored proficient or above in social studies, and the goal is to study them again in seventh grade to see an increase in that grade as well. So, that one is going up from 88% into the 90s. The early literacy goal, okay, so this is a little bit squishy, because we don't know what it was this year, but by the end of 2017-18 school year, the percentage of first grade students being benchmarks on the FAST assessment will increase from fall to spring. So, in this case, we're just, we're comparing the same students from spring to fall. I'm sure it was in there. It says here this is the same goal we've had over the last years for early literacy, so nothing new there. I don't know if she's gonna mention it, I know what we looked for, Carrie, not she, Carrie, she kind of led us in this exercise to try to identify where should we look, and it was interesting because she gave us, or they gave us trends, I would say, over the last seven to eight years, was it? So you could track and say, you know, historically, do they, do we see increases from sixth grade to seventh grade? You can track classes all the way through, and I think in some cases, and honestly, I'm not sure which ones, but in some cases, we just chose where we had the lowest proficiency score, and we chose to make that our goal. In other cases, we noticed trends where maybe, this is just an example, but from like ninth grade to 10th grade in math, maybe we didn't see as much of a jump as we had hoped in the past or something, so we kind of looked at it from different angles, I would say, and came up with these, so...
And you can tell by this year's numbers, it was a lot more difficult.
Yes.
With, three of them are all around at 94%, and we're better, we say we're striving for 100%, and we pretty much have to now on some of these.
We weren't kidding.
Look, and I think that's important to know, I mean, we do this, this stems from No Child Left Behind, and we know that that is in its sunset, and the Every Student Succeeds Act is taking its place, but there's still pieces of this that, you know, are still in the books that we have to, I mean, it's just what we have to do. But like Austin said, we still say we are every student every day, and we, our long-range goal is that we are at 100%. Schools would kill for this data, and I know it's not about test scores, I think, I came away from that by thinking, oh my gosh, people think that's all I care about. That is not all I care about, at all. It's one, it's a data point, it's one snapshot of a student, but I'm telling you, when you're looking at this, there are times you need to sit back and say, we've got some good things going here. Now, do you rest back on that? Absolutely not, because you can see the goals that we're setting here. I mean, I think, I love about Chris Billings when we look at the social studies school, because that's what we looked at, he goes, all right, we all know what this one is, because we saw a score of 88, ooh, you know, or 88 or 89, I don't have my glasses, I can't. But the thing of that is, those are, these are good problems to have that we're doing, and even though we know, as we were talking, we were looking, okay, yeah, we've got, this is the proficient, we've got the proficient level, then we've got the advanced, we're also having those conversations, how do we move those, what are we gonna do about these kids, they're here proficient, but we want to get them up here. So all those things are happening when we set these goals, but, you know, this is just one of those things that we have to do, but we had a great committee, and thank you for your work on that.
Absolutely. Congratulations, those are terrific. Don't worry about it, just have a round of applause. Review of open enrollment.
We need to take action.
Order to approve those. Motion on the ETR goals.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Stand's approved. Open enrollment.
We had just had this on last year, and just wanted to take a look at it to make sure that everyone understands that we've had it talked about. I think it was talked about at the forums a number of times, but we did tweak it a little bit last year, I know that for the kindergarten, it was a little bit of a tweak as we looked at what we'd be doing this year, and I think it was the sixth grade, Chris, was there anything that we moved just a little bit there? I just wanted to have you take a look at it, because there are, there are a lot of schools that really wonder, what is it that you're doing there? How is it that you're handling this matrix? What is this, you know, talking about? And, you know, I appreciate Jim, you know, mentioning some of the things that he did earlier, because I think that we want to make sure that we look at the big picture, not to try to find that quick fix that, you know, what's gonna get us, you know, some quick dollars for the general fund, but what's gonna look at, what's gonna prove over the test of time? And I was in a meeting the other day, Jim, do you know how, you've been here, how long has this been in effect, do you know, as far as the matrix?
As long as I've been around.
It's gonna go back to, over 25 years, easily.
And, so, you know, this has been, this has been here for a while, there's no doubt about it, and it has been tested, I think some of you, I think Kim, you've been on the board when there's been tests on that, and Q alluded to that earlier. My point is, I just want you to look at this, I think that right now, and I, you know, I'd asked Stacy, or I'd asked Chris, from the standpoint of, as we've looked at the new open enrollment or the tweaks that we made, if that's having any effect, either positive or negative, if you'd like to share anything there, fine, but I just want to make sure that each, each year we take a look at this and see where we're at. And again, it has proven through the test... And, uh, and again, it has proven through the test of time. Anything as far as, Stacy, from the kindergarten end of it?
I, I would say, and I, I guess I don't know if you want to call it a positive or a negative, I think it just depends, you know, because I think what we did is, um, you know, if you look, and that, you think that kindergarten and that first grade class can give you a pretty good idea of what was happening is, because we were taking an automatic seven kids in, and then we were taking siblings on top of that, we were ending up with that bigger gap of what you can see, that, that's where that over, what those ideal class size, you know, the ideal class size never would be.
Right.
And so I think what we have now, right now, we're kind of straight, we took a few kiddos that we had space for, and we're right at ninety. So right now, we're kind of right at that, what I would call that even, um, spot. Um, so you can see that that, I guess to me, it's probably more an accurate representation. I think it will be more accurate as to showing us what our growth is, as to, instead of open enrollment telling us what our growth is.
And that's seven, Stacy, and that, was that ten percent used to be?
So that, that kind of gives you a, and so when Jim gives you an idea of how long that matrix was in place, seven was used as a number because it was ten percent of a class.
Yep.
And so that tells you how long ago, because if you go back and see when we have classes of seventy kids, that was how long ago that was.
Sure.
Jim's probably right about twenty-five years.
Yeah. And then the other one was, we made something, just a little bit of adjustment, uh, for the, the sixth grade as they come in, and the St. Cecilia's portion of that, but I think it, at least it gives us a true picture of where things are at. Chris, any comment?
No, I'm not gonna make much comment. You can see we have three big classes right now in the middle school, just to, I just want to give you a little feel. So when we broke out the fifth grade, we were just over four hundred, so you can see how close we're getting to that number again. Um, the only other thing that I'm worried about is, you see that big hundred, the year behind it actual might be a nice breather, once the fourth graders get up there, but, um, that hundred and fifteen, what I'm a little worried about is, we got word from St. Cecilia's earlier this spring, they're sending us fifteen this year.
Holy cow.
Which is a huge number. Usually we only get about anywhere from eight to eleven from them, it's fifteen. And so if you add ten or fifteen move-ins, um, so the, the fall may bring about us re-talking about another teacher or possibly doing something with that group, because it's, it's, it has the possibility. Now, some years we don't get hardly any move-ins, but I'm guessing we're gonna, if I were predicting guy right now, that hundred and fifteen could easily turn into thirty more kids with move-ins and, and St. Cecilia's. And that tends to be the bubble, then after that, we don't see as much growth after that, so.
So when you look at those middle school numbers, if you'll scroll up just a little bit, when they're starting to talk about the squeeze at the high school, Lane, uh, Lane will talk about it just a little bit here about the seniors that are graduating and then the number, but he's gonna be bringing in approximately, they may be adding to that, a hundred and twenty-five eighth graders that will be becoming ninth graders. So, uh, and what do you have, a hundred and fourteen, Lane, is that what the estimate? Is that pretty close there for, uh, at least that's what it has on there for the...
That's how many students, that's not grad, that's part-time home school.
Gotcha, gotcha. But what we're saying is that we're gonna be bringing in more kids in the, for the freshmen as we graduate seniors, so that'll be something that, that are also looking at. Any comments on this? I don't know if you guys are getting a lot of questions on it or anything like that. Um, I, I, I go back to what Jim said, I mean, this thing has been there for a while, people, you know, there's been challenges and, and they've looked at it. The biggest thing is we have to be consistent on how we're, we're handling it, and we're trying to definitely do that.
I, I'd just comment that I think we do need to continue to be consistent, a key will be when we're ready to look at, in this case, a sixth section, whether that be in sixth grade or whether that be in kindergarten, so just ask if the administration keep, uh, open on that. And then regarding back to the matrix, we had an inquiry, uh, email sent to the board just a week or two ago, uh, about wanting to open enroll, but it didn't look like it was gonna work, and we just, we responded by saying that we had to stick to this matrix, and I talked to one of the parents just a couple days ago, and they've now decided to buy and move into the district. So, you know, I, I think we do need to stick with the matrix, it's not that we're forcing people to move into the district, but that always is an option rather than taking their chances on open enrollment, so. And as we saw on the forum, and, uh, John Muller presented, I, I think in a growing district, we, we need to make sure that we're not expanding the open enrollment, doesn't mean that we have to shrink it, but we certainly can't be expanding it when we're needing more facilities.
That's a good point, yes. So, any, uh, comments? Open enrollment. So no changes?
No.
Open enrollment.
Not planned.
Alright.
Just wanted to talk.
That's good. So the next item we have is approval for the two thousand seventeen National FFA Convention in Indianapolis.
This happens at the high school, uh, I think I'll just refer to Mr. Billings, uh, Mr. Lane Billings, from the standpoint of the high school, I mean, this is an annual thing.
This is an annual thing that takes place every year, but I'll be, that is new, so it's inconsistent, so I'd definitely recommend with the team.
Alright. Entertain a motion to approve that.
So moved.
Do we have a second? Any further discussion?
One's the second.
All papers say aye.
No, that's mine.
All opposed? Stands approved. Title one.
Next one is the, uh, title one, the involvement policy in the parent compact. Each year we do this, uh, you, this comes to you, and you can, hopefully you've had a chance to take a look at this. Um, they, uh, work, they work hard to make sure that everyone understands exactly what's happening there in, in the title one.
It's a lot of words, was there any sort of significant change?
Not that I'm aware. Stacy, is anything that was significant from the, uh...
No, I think the only change that Lindsay and I talked about, one of the things that we've done in the past, and the policy committee might remember this, and we, um, so the board changed, I think it's five oh five point eight.
Yep, exactly.
Um, this year, and we had the discussion between the really fleshed out version of five oh five point eight. And the one that was very simplified, and we went with the simplified, and then we still left the fleshed out stuff there, so we have like that, and like an amendment or addendum. Um, I would just ask maybe the board talk about taking the, the little extra stuff out and just leaving the five oh five point eight, which that's what typically school boards are doing, is just leaving the, and then they approved this, because this is the part that we give to parents, and it's still a board-approved, um, compact and information. This is the part that's more the fleshed out part, it's just not part of what I would call more board policy. But it's, I don't know that that's really an action item tonight, but just a conversation that Lindsay and I had, that I noticed after you guys cleaned up the policy the last time.
So the recommendation would be to approve this, this is an annual, uh, policy, or an annual approval that we have each year. You can see the compacting, you can see the involvement portion of it.
Entertain a motion to approve the title one parental involvement attachment.
Second.
Any further discussion? All papers say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Stands approved. For Sean, two thousand seventeen graduating seniors list, entertain a motion to approve that. Do I have a first? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All papers say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Stands approved. Commencement plans? Think you want...
I just wanted, I just asked Lane if he would, uh, I don't know how many of you are planning on coming to, uh, the commencement exercises, but I just asked him to talk a little bit, if you are, you know, what time you need to be there. I know some of you are up on stage, um, I think that, Sean, you're doing the welcome, and John, you're doing the closing, is that correct?
Yes.
So, uh, but would you just talk to him a little bit about that, Lane, if you would?
Uh, we, first thing is, uh, remember on, uh, Friday, May twenty-sixth is when we do a practice session, so if you're interested in coming at eight-thirty in the morning, that's when we do a practice session, uh, so you're welcome, you can be a part of that if you want to see that happen and practice giving out the home seat. Um, so that will take place then. After that, uh, just adding in, last year, uh, the senior team came up with the thought process of going and, and walking through each school, and that went really well last year. I think the students on both sides of that really enjoyed it, and so that's going to happen again, so I appreciate the senior team in, in coming up with that last year as just a great addition to what we're looking at. Then on graduation Sunday, uh, the students will be reporting into the auditorium at one o'clock, so we usually recommend, uh, the two board members, Sean and John, to come in around that time as well, just so you're a part of that, to get to see everything happening, and kind of get the feels, several of you have done this before, so you understand what I'm saying there, I hope. Um, that's also when they take their picture. Uh, about five minutes beforehand, we go out and start lining up, uh, the two, the students on both sides of the, uh, of the gymnasium. That's when the board and the administration and everybody goes in and goes up to, uh, and sits on the stage at that time, so that's about five minutes beforehand when we go in to do that. Then, uh, um, after the pomp and circumstance, that's when Sean would be speaking right after that, so he'd first right after that. Um, I'm not gonna go through the whole thing, but John, you're, you're, you're the last right after you're done, is when they throw, throw, uh, throw, uh, salt. The only thing I would, um, add is, uh, they've elected the people who are speaking, Nora Brinkmeyer and Jack Kerns are the two that are speaking, and I do get to hear their speeches beforehand on that Friday as well, so that's interesting.
And what's the, about thirty or forty-five minute speech?
I, or two. I would say, uh, remember it's a welcome and a closing. So, uh, I appreciate it, being very limited, and when he says, you know, a couple minutes, you know, that's really, uh, what would be best. We already have two student speakers, there are different things going on regarding that, so I appreciate that. Remember the board members also, uh, hand out those diplomas, so we'll get you so you can give them to the right people. And, uh, um, they'll be sitting up on the stage, uh, and, and so it'd be nice to just do a little bit of the practice when you guys come in early on Sunday at least, that we could go over there and just kind of talk about how that's gonna take place.
Alright, that sounds good.
Any other questions for me?
No, thanks for lining that up, please. Oh, okay. Student fees and hot lunch prices.
Okay, we're talking about two thousand seventeen eighteen here. Um, this is what, um, recommendations, and how we came up with that, um, is basically we did a, um, we sent out a questionnaire, finding out what everybody, um, so I took the responses of some of the area schools and found, and did an average, and, um, so in the green is what we're proposing, basically no change, the elementary, um, so our changes will take place at middle school yearbook, um, from fifteen to seventeen, that was a recommendation from Mr. Chris Billings. Um, and then we noticed, um, as we're doing the, an average of the area schools, that our breakfast prices were almost fifteen cents less than area schools, um, an average of eleven and thirteen cents, so we thought, well, we've increased it by fifteen cents, and maybe we wouldn't have to do that next year, we just make the jump this year. And then, um, down to the adult breakfast, we're really behind in the adult breakfast. Now, what I keep in mind, we don't serve a lot of adults, but, um, we were behind the average of almost thirty-six cents. So, um, we recommend that we go up to one eighty-five on that, instead of, we currently have one forty-five. The elementary and intermediate lunch, um, it's, the average were behind seventeen cents, so we just rounded into fifteen cents for that. So the elementary and intermediate would go from two forty to two fifty-five. Um, the, that's really small, so then at the, um, middle school, it'd be two sixty from two forty-five, and the high school, it'd be two seventy from two fifty-five, so it's fifteen cents more. The adult prices, that is set by the federal government, and so it has to be three dollars and fifty-five cents, which we are already there, so we don't need to make a change there. And milk prices, um, just to keep the, you know, milk, we, that is a commodity, and it fluctuates, and we do do a milk bid, so just to stay on top of it, um, we currently are at forty, rounded up, five cents to forty-five cents. And the average is forty-two cents for the area. So that's our, um, nothing on class due, so that's how we came up with the proposal of these prices for next year.
Yeah, that was a well-done deal, because we're putting the comparatives and the averages in there. Entertain a motion to...
Could I ask one question? Like, what is the average, how many milks does the average kid drink? Like, I'm just trying to think, like, what are the costs impact to our family?
The milk, okay, you receive one milk with your, to make it a reimbursable meal, you're allowed one milk.
Okay.
So, um, an additional milk would be if somebody would get two milks.
Got it, okay.
And I would think two milks is probably the most in it.
Really, living, living it up on that.
Some people, I mean, you're only talking a little cart, if they take milk, I mean, at high school, I would imagine it's probably more maybe, if they do, but, uh, I can't give you an exact answer.
No, this is a scary question.
But if one comes with the meal, and then forty-five cents extra if they grab a second one.
Any other questions? No, thank you, Karen.
Just one on, um, I'm just curious if there's any awareness, I'm not aware, but I'm just asking the question, any awareness of any students in the district that cannot afford, like the student activity ticket, or any of the costs that maybe don't participate because of the cost, or do we have some funds that's available to cover in a situation like that? And I'm thinking specifically on the student activity.
I'm not aware of any.
I'm not aware, do you guys, I mean, without, you know, getting into too much detail, are you aware of anything along those lines?
Free and reduced kids obviously already get their lunch free, and so that, that's most of the, that takes care of most of the problem. I will tell you that we have had some families get, get into trouble and get into debt on the lunch account, and many times they make it up themselves, but there have been times when we've asked sororities to help cover the cost of a student that's in trouble, and we know that it's extenuating circumstances that have gotten them into trouble, and so that happens sometimes. Not as much with the activity pass, and that's probably something we need to keep in.
I'm not aware of any.
Keep in.
Now, the free and reduced applications do apply to student fees, but the athletic passes are, are optional, so they're not considered as student fees, so that won't take any place. I'm not aware of anything, um, or any comments, or, or any phone calls, or any correspondences offhand.
Yep. I'd just ask, we keep our ears open, and if there are students in that situation, as we're a growing district, that we be mindful of that, so, um, I think, I wouldn't want to see anybody not being able to participate or attend because of a fifty-five dollar fee, so, just, I think it's good for us to be just aware of it.
Thanks, David. Entertain a motion to approve those fees?
So moved.
Second. Any further discussion? All papers say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Stands approved. amended board policy.
Hey, you have quite a few of these, excuse me, quite a few of these that are on the first reading, Gail's just coming up to that first one on the, uh, family and, uh, medical leaves, is that what it was, Gail? Yep. And, uh, the, the part that, you know, I wanted to have you focus in on is this one right here, if you take it just a second to read that, or to look at that paragraph that's highlighted.
I've been working with Ollers Law Firm on this, this is the standard, um, recommended policy they have for school districts. The highlighted yellow is an optional, so, um, that's why we, we left it in there, because it's, it is an option that you can consider, but it's definitely up to you as a board to determine if that should be part of that policy or not.
What's the recommendation to determine that being?
No, it's, it's, it's...
This is entirely...
It's totally, yeah.
Are they saying both, both parts of that, the, when you return, you'll be reinstated the same equivalent job, and also if you do not return, you have to reimburse your shared health insurance? Both of those are considered optional?
Yes.
Or not a stance on that one, where, no?
That's a pretty rigid stance, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah. It, it's definitely an option, but they just wanted to be aware, but, um, I have not heard of any, um, any particular school district that does this, um, or, um, everybody has an FMLA, but I have not heard of anybody that, that requires their staff to do this, reimburse for healthcare, if they don't come back.
I would, I mean, I...
I would, I mean, I, I don't know how much of a discussion we're having at the board table. I would suggest that we don't put that in unless we're really getting burned by it. Read's pretty punitive, and I, I don't know, I don't like the language of it, but, you know, again, if this is a real problem that we're facing, I mean, we do need to put a policy in, I, I don't, it seems like an edge case, and...
I don't know that we're getting burned by it, and I think it's probably really a pretty restrictive policy that we may not need to have. I think if, if I was going to be looking at it and making a recommendation to you, that would probably be an option that I would not put in there.
Yep. Sorry, declare by the second half of that, right?
Right.
The first half of that, we want to keep in there, that you will get the same...
The last sentence. Tyler, I see what you're saying here. Yeah, it's just the, I got highlighted happy there. Just the, the last pair, the last sentence there. If you do not return after the FMLA, you are required to reimburse, reimburse the district for the share of health insurance premiums paid on their behalf would be the option.
Yeah, those are two different issues, which I think we, at the very least, want to split out, but I'd be more inclined to support the first, and I don't know if the, I'm with Brian, I'm not sure if the second is necessary.
Well, it can always be added back in if it...
Right. If there's an issue...
We've had FMLA, but I don't know that we've had any cases that have been a problem.
Not that, not since I've been here, not, I've heard, anyway. But I, I, as a board, you need to be aware that this is an option, but, okay, I will take that in consideration and take that out. So this is just the first reading, so we'll bring it back and take that out. Thank you.
You can take a look at some of the other ones. Some of those are the school nutrition program, the free and reduced prices for meals and eligibility, and the meal charges. Some of those that we have in there are things, I know that Brian and Kim, we've talked about those, and we've had policy meetings to try and set some of these, and like, when you're looking at this, what you have to have in place, I believe by July one, is you have to be able to have a policy in place to tell how you will handle some of these, these situations. And you can see that Gail has already talked, or is showing you there what we would be looking at for that policy.
And what we currently do is, is in this policy right now. So basically, what we're saying, and we have a very liberal policy, and we kept it that way. We can always change this, we can review it and change it. So we're, we have in this policy what we're actually doing to date. And basically, we're saying that students who qualify for free meals will never be denied a reimbursable meal, even if they are, have accrued negative balance from previous purchases. Employees may use a charge account for meals. That's in there, it's required to have that in there, I don't know why, but yes, our employees have it, and everybody gets treated the same. So then, when there's a negative balance, the school district, basically, our policy is, if you come down to this part right here, is families will be notified of an outstanding negative balance, once the negative balance reaches ten dollars per child by the building personnel. And we kept it general because it's usually the secretary, and they usually, you know, every building has their unique situation, how they handle, maybe it's an email, maybe it's a, you know, we just left it, however, each building does it, so each, the ten dollars per child. When the negative balance is of more than forty dollars, it will be turned over to superintendent, or superintendent designated for collection. Now, we left it as general that. We have situation, when it reaches that, it does go to superintendent at that point, there's a letter, then at one point after forty dollars, there is a, a phone call. But at this point, instead of getting down in that nitty-gritty and, you know, at forty-five dollars this and sixty dollars, but once it reaches forty, it's turned over to superintendent, and it's gone to the next level.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
And what we try to do on that is, you know, it's not like it's great to make those calls, but we try to work with people. And that is, if you're in debt, you have a negative balance, let's say, in that lunch account, we don't need you to maybe take it, wipe it out all in one shot, we'll work with you. If you can, if you can make payments to us, or make some monthly payments, or whatever it is, and people are usually pretty good, they will try to work with you on that. What were you going to say?
The, I, I really like this policy, and like how it reads, it, this satisfies the July first changes?
Yes.
Okay, great.
We have to have this in place by July first. So this is currently, but keep in mind, we're constantly reviewing this, we've talked about meeting with every, with all the people involved in the lunch program, and talking about, because there's certain, like, at certain grades, there's the negative balance, the à la carte is so much money that per child that they, you know, and à la carte's not necessary, so are we doing them a disservice by allowing it to happen? Now, that's a monster by itself, because how do you manage that? You know, is it the lunch lady's responsibility? Is it the, you know, the, the person behind the monitor? So it's something that we need to buy in together as a group, that, okay, it's great to come up with an idea in the office, that, okay, we have to manage this, how are we going to manage it? And then take it down and say, we want you to do this. Well, what if it doesn't work in this situation? You know, so we need to bring people together and talk about, how can we do this? And one of the things we have talked about is, and I don't know if this is, will work, but, you know, how about if we send everybody through the line, and the lunch, the, the checkout has to be at the end of the, everybody has their plate, and they have to be, the checkout is the end, because they are supposed to look to see if it's a reimbursable meal. Well, along the way, they collect à la carte and check out too. But what if we just have everybody go through the line with just the reimbursable meal? Then, if they want à la carte, they have to go back through, and if it's negative, you can say, you know what, you had your reimbursable meal, you don't have money in your account, you know? I don't know if that is a great theory, maybe it'll work, but we need to talk about those things, because we do, are we doing a disservice for allowing it to happen? You know, because we're not going to re, you know, refuse them a meal, but how do we control the extra that's not necessary? That, you know, we have some students that spend a lot of money on a daily basis on extras.
Right.
And so, how do we manage that? How do we, you know, so we're continually talking about that, we need to, to work together as a group to get through this, and maybe help everybody and the parents, and to, to try to, to get this down a little bit.
I remember with our first, he's on his own, but he used to go nuts with à la carte, and it was a big parenting issue that we had there.
Yeah.
Fifty bucks a week was crazy.
Yeah, yeah. So, you know, we have the parents, you know, that don't do anything about it, you know, so as a district is, you know, do we step in and say, okay, we need to manage this for you now, you know? And we're not, you know, we're talking older kids that should probably have some kind of, you know, they should know how to spend money, you know, and, and maybe not spend a few dollars.
You're not just kids, right?
This is, to meet our deadline for July first, but just keep in mind that, you know, we're going to continually work at this and try to, to get a handle of this and work together, so.
One just, what, do you spend much of your time making those home calls?
Yeah, yeah.
Do you take questions? Is it okay to add something to that? There used to be a thing, I remember when the kids were younger, where we had to approve if they'd get extra milk or not. Could you do that at the beginning of the year, where the parents can just like take off that it's okay? For them to have à la carte or not, and that way you don't really need to have like a, a public discussion in front of like their friends when they're sending them with their tray.
I'll check that, for some reason, I know there was a com, there's a complication with that, and I don't know if it's a software issue, but we've talked about that, and there was something that, that wasn't, I don't know if it went with all purchases, you know, or, but I'll check into that, because I, I was thinking there was an issue with that. That seems very simple, but I think there was an issue with that.
Probably, and I'll just speak up here, because I'm the one who manages that stuff. The parent can put the little check mark on there, whether the student complies or not is the issue. And there's, you know, even when the check mark's on there, what happens is by the time they get to the checkout, then they got to take it back, and, and I will tell you, first, you know, just two things I want you to keep in mind. Number one, it's, it is a management nightmare at our place. Maybe not in the superintendent's office, but it's at our place, because kids are constantly bucking their parents' wishes on this issue. And so that's, that's the hard part. The second thing I want to remember is, and I'm just going to use a quote, someone like that once said, you know, when you're poor in Gilbert, you're really poor. When you're poor in Des Moines, you're not that poor. When you're poor in Gilbert, you're really poor. And I find myself often just saying, I will pay for that, because I don't want that kid to be humiliated just that much further than they've been the last fifteen times they couldn't afford something, so. I just wanted to put those two thoughts, you know, in the process, and I'm not disagreeing with what Gail's suggesting, but just...
And you brought a good point. We've had some tough discussion about, because we're Gilbert, and we have some great givers. But the thing about that is, because we're dealing with federal funds, we have to treat everybody the same for, to, to receive those funds. We can't distribute those, those donations on it, because this person's this person, or, you know, this person has a debt of five hundred dollars, so they deserve a five hundred dollar donation. You have to treat everybody the same. So there's things that when you receive donations, and we have received donations, we have to do it across the board the same. So we have to come up with a policy of how we're going to distribute those, those donations. So many things that they have...
Or you do like me, and you tell the parent to do it privately?
Yeah.
And not run it through the school?
Well, it would be...
That's how you solve that problem.
Yeah, and I, I've met with a patron, and, and he was doing a great, you know, and then we had to sit down with him and say, okay, but this is what we're dealing with when we take these funds, you know? And they, and it's a great idea, but then we have to meet these things. So that's, that's a great idea, if people just handle it, you know, on an individual basis.
I'm just thinking it'd be nice, especially middle school, high school, if there was a way that the student could scan something, and the screen popped up that said, you know, this is what you can get today, or this is how many funds are in your account, or mom said no, or whatever it is, then they can go through the line.
And that's what we were talking about, you know, if we separated, you know, the first time you go through is through a reimbursable non, you know, your reimbursable meal, everybody gets that, going through the second time, because, you know, what Chris said, that's what the, the toggle switch of yes or no is, once that à la carte item's on their plate, you can't take it back, you know? So then the second time, you'd have a little bit of better, you know, manage it one-on-one time, or it wouldn't be in front of, you know, I don't know how discreet it can be, it's crazy in there anyway, but...
It seems like it would be a nightmare, though. Do they get, what, twenty minutes for lunch?
Yeah.
You know?
So there's so many things to think about of how to make this work.
You break the line, there's two sections, the ones that can go this way, and the ones that can go this way.
Yeah, and how do you do it on a, a very secretive, you know, non, yeah, it's just...
What's the, what's kind of our net losses on average on this scale? What kind of money are we, what kind of problem are we trying to call?
It's, it, it's a moving target at any given time, because I think at the most, the highest, we had a negative two thousand dollars in lunch, and I think we...
How much collectively, though?
Where does it end up at the end of the year?
For all students.
For, okay, so last year, I think we're at around, I'm going to say about, we put some donations in there, but it was around a thousand dollars, I think.
In total?
Mm-hmm. So now, as a, as a, as a whole, is that acceptable?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think so.
So...
We'd spend a thousand dollars more on personnel and all that.
Well, if we had Sam say another paragraph or two, I mean...
But if it gets bigger, then...
There are neighboring districts that would put zeros behind our, our numbers, you know, so, and I'm not saying that that's what we're striving for, but I think that our, our...
But, and the, and the whole, and this is the purpose of the whole policy, it's supposed to not be negative, and because it's supposed to be, you know...
Well, food servers can't be negative, right?
Right.
So as long as they make, not make profit, but as long as they're, they've got a little bit of cushion, we should be fine.
So anyway, so with that all, and, you know, we, we'll handle this, we'll deal with how we're going to do this, and, and everything that goes with it. But this, as of July first, this will meet the deadline, so first reading, we kept it pretty general of what we currently are going to do.
But I, I want to make sure I have all the boards on board, but if the losses stay in that reasonableness range, we wouldn't be expecting you to have to do anything, is my own opinion, if it doesn't get to be a bigger deal one day.
Yeah, and I don't want us chasing dollars to the point where it becomes a nightmare for anyone that has to manage lunch. Yeah, I mean...
Well, particularly for, for Mr. Billings, I'd, that'd be one less thing he had to goof around with, that'd be a good thing. Is that a first reading?
First reading.
Okay, all right, great. 2017-18 Cooperative Agreement for Pre-Services Clinical Placement with the University of Northern Iowa.
This is pretty common, what they do, I mean, we have, being so close to Iowa State, but you and I, I like to get in here too with some of their people, it's basically having the opportunity to have them come out and do some placement in here, would recommend approval.
Entertain a motion to approve it.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Brian, was that you?
That was.
And then Sean, right? Okay.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Stands approved. Parking lot repair.
Parking lot...
I don't have anything for that. I don't think he received them today.
Okay.
He was supposed to receive them today, and I...
Overruled.
Okay.
So just no action on that.
Okay. And the last item there is actions on the administrative contracts for employment recommendation.
You can see the, the information there, you can take a look at it. Would, I guess, focus in on Mr. Chris Billings, would like to thank him for his twelve years, is that right, Chris?
Twelve years.
Twelve years of service to the district, and wish him the best of luck at Summit Middle School in Johnston. Thank you for all you've done, Chris.
Thank you.
Would you like to say anything?
No, just, it's the hardest decision I've ever had to make in my life, honestly, very difficult. But I love Gilbert Middle School, and I always will.
Well, you've done an outstanding job, and you're going to be missed.
Thanks.
Entertain a motion to approve the administrative contracts. So moved. Any fir, do I have a second?
Tyler, the second.
You've got a second, yep. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Stands approved. Okay, the consent agenda, minutes of April 10th, and the public forums of the 19th, 26th, and 29th, and the May 4th, public forum. I think those are...
Does anybody want me to pull up any of them?
No.
Okay.
Thank you for taking minutes on those.
Is that the, the one on the forums, Gail?
Uh-huh.
For the April 26th, board members?
Okay.
Sean Barber was there, and I was there.
Okay. I'll make that change. Oh, Jonathan, you have the minutes, so I will make...
Okay.
So it was Tyler, Sean, and who was the third one?
I think it was just Sean and I.
Oh, okay.
Do you remember Sean?
Yeah.
That night?
Yeah, that was just us.
Okay. I will add Sean to the group.
Okay. Anything in the bills you didn't like there?
They were pretty much nothing out of the ordinary, anything to bring up, they were pretty traditional bills for the month.
Any questions for Gail on the bills? The financial reports.
Okay. So the secretaries report reflects the cash balance in the bank, so we go through this. We, once again, we have strong cash balances compared to a year ago, and so cash in bank is strong. The target spending, as of today, our budget year, we could be, for a published budget, the April 15th, is eighty-three point three three of the budget year. And as you can tell, our published budget, we are at an overall twenty-six point three six percent behind that, so that's a great target amount. This is really hard to read, but a couple of comments on the general fund expense recap. The general fund, the percent of expense is sixty-eight point three seven percent of, are again, eighty-three point three three of what we are at the budget year from July to what month, April. We could be at eighty-three point three three percent, but expenditures are at sixty-eight point three seven percent at our 10-month mark. So we are below fourteen point nine six percent, which is a decrease of point seven two compared to a year ago, almost a percent less expenditures than a year ago. The year-to-date net difference between expenses and revenue is two point nine million. The year-to-date net difference between expenses and revenue is 2.9 million. The general fund year-to-date, just to get a summary of, I like this myself, just to get an idea of where we're at condensed version. And so our revenue compared to a year ago. And so the, breaking it down, overall, we have a, this report shows a summary of revenue compared to a fiscal year '16, local, intermediate, state, federal, and et cetera. The expenditures compared to fiscal year '16 for salaries, benefits, purchase service, supplies, property, and mislands and other is a negative 14,950 less reflected in fiscal year '16. There's again the federal adjustment of Medicaid, which we report differently, I report differently than we did a year ago, so that's reflected there. And the revenue shows an increase of 1.18045, or 1.1 million, which is a 9.61%. Overall, the expenditures have increased 459,000 compared to a year ago. And so overall, our expenditures as you salary and benefits are at 78.05% of expenditures, which is the range that we want. And it's a little bit higher than it was at last month compared to overall expenditures. But this is a summary of our expenditures divided up into different categories of expenditures compared to a year ago. The activity fund report, or the PEPAL report, the main expense here is, we had musical instruments purchased. And we had a repair, less refrigeration, middle school kitchen freezer compressor was $3,700 for a middle school compressor in the kitchen.
Those only last 11 years.
Yeah, so those were just the two main, those were considered the big PEPAL ticket items this month.
Gail, can I fill in something? Excuse me. We did have an opportunity to meet as an administrative team and meet with Steve Volstead, and we have a PEPAL priority list of what we will be planning on doing for the summer. And we will, I'll try to get that out to you and share that with you. Again, we're staying within basically the budget items, but we ask each of the building principals, what are some of the things that we need to make sure that we're focusing on with Steve's help?
We're continuously working on, working with advisors to have all activity funds reports, or activity funds at zero bounds, such as June 30th. May is almost over, which is scary thought, so we will continuously work with groups and coaches and leaders on those areas. And the nutrition report, this report also shows a different reporting than last year. I am again recording what is in the accounting software and not what's in the meal program. The expenditures are $12,800 less than fiscal year '16 in salaries and benefits. This is a reflection of not being fully staffed again. And one position is still open in the kitchen. An increase in purchase services of $6,000 is more than, because we hired an employment service. So instead of salaries and benefits, it's a purchase service from an agency. The cash balance is $44,500 more than fiscal year '16. This amount actually decreased from last month of almost $1,800. The number of lunches and breakfasts are, have increased, and that's due to the increase of enrollment and two more service days in the school and the month. I also included two interesting reports that were available now that's out on the Department of Nutrition. And this is lots of information, but a couple of things that I just, on page one is the operating ratios. And I thought it was interesting is that food cost is 46%. And salaries and benefits is 44% and supplies and others. So that's the nutrition program, the expenditures, the percent. The other thing is on page two is the meal costs. And this takes into consideration commodities and, and everything that is kept track of. And the, these little chicken scratches here that I put in here is, I just want, these are what we get, the dollar amounts we get reimbursed for federal and state. So a meal, we, for a paid, fully paid meal, if a student that's not on free and reduced, we receive $2.68. That's their fee, that the student fee plus other federal and state dollars. And a free student, we get reimbursed $3.04, and a reduced, we get reimbursed $3.04. And a look at the cost of a lunch with all that. So you can see it's really hard to keep a positive balance, you know. So that's why you rely on all those extra things that you sell at lunch to get those kids to eat. And then the breakfast is, you know, it's $2.29. So it's, and the other interesting point in these reports is on page three is the number of meals that are labor. Meals per labor hour, and we, our cooks serve 69 meals per hour. So this one, this report here is from 15, oh, is it? 14, 15, and then I also quoted 15 and 16, just for information. And then also, tonight, I have on your table, the ISB, just, IASB just released financial, all their financial reports. So I wanted to get those to you so you could just review them, and I put our 10 up and 10 down of enrollment in here. And informational, lots of information.
And since we all take classes.
These are available on their tool website, but here's a hard copy. And the first couple pages explain what that is. And I know you guys have been on the board long enough, as you go through these, things will be very familiar with you. And then going forward, a comparison tool for the future.
We'll have a project-based learning program next time, then we'll calculate these ratios.
Our ratios are going up. So
I'm just curious where our solvency is. I mean, that's, the numbers look very positive, Gail, but is that in that bracket? What current solvency?
Yeah, and actually on page, page 44, clear in the back. It talks about, you know, like, an unspent maximum budget ratio. And the solvency ratio should be in a range between 5% and 15%, no more than 25%. And so for fiscal year '12, our solvency
We've been running less than 10, but
Yes.
Actually, is it current one right now?
Our current one, as current as it is, is fiscal year '16, and we're at 1.6%. Now that's an increase from 1.2. And it was as high as 18.5 in 2012.
Right, before we opened the high school.
Right, so it went from 12
With this cash balance, it didn't drive though.
Yeah, we expected to be much better at fiscal year '17, tracking everything that we've done. And of course, now fiscal year '17 information, the timeline of that is September 15th, as financial reports are due. So it's not gonna be until December, when, November, December, when those figures come in, and that'll be unaudited. And so there'll really be true figures once the audit is complete.
But do we, can we calculate that monthly, do?
Not monthly, because our revenues come in at different times, but it really is just a measurement at one time of the year, and that's after the September 15th. And then we have an estimate on September 15th when we put in the reports and they're finalized, but then the reports have to go through their review with the Department of Ed, they have to be audited, so you're looking at November, December.
So that would be the time on the district priorities?
Yeah, I would say we could put in an estimate, probably around September, October, put in an estimate, and just make sure we mark it that it's unaudited or an estimate, and then have a final number in there.
Because I think we're shooting somewhere between eight and 12, or?
Yep.
Anything else for Gail on the financial reports?
One question on the PEPAL for the current year, for technology, it looks like quite a bit of budget remaining. Gail or Lindsey, are there plans for purchasing additional computers, or will that not, that
Jason, Jason happens to be sitting in the back of the room, I'm sure that he can answer this.
Hey, Jason.
Yeah, you wanna tell him what you're looking at purchasing?
So we are looking at purchasing the replacement Chromebooks for the high school, approximately 550 Chromebooks. We try to keep that to the end of the year, so it's kind of a contingency fund, and we kind of plan ahead for the next year.
But they will be ordered.
They will be ordered before July 1st, hopefully before the end of May.
Will that go against this current?
Yes, yes.
Yep.
And what kind of damage is 550 Chrome laptops ballpark?
We're looking at like $120,000, $130,000.
Okay.
There you go, Tyler. $130,000, approximately.
Thanks, Jason, and thanks, by the way, my iPad's working great tonight.
Perfect.
If anybody has any questions about those financial reports, just let me know.
Personnel?
This has been an ongoing item today. I know, I keep hearing Lindsey's, every time I update something, Lindsey's computer bings, so he knows I'm updating things. So he was doing it many times today.
Yeah, you can take a look at those. I'm not gonna go through all of them. I guess, do you have any questions on anything that you see there? You can see the different categories. As you scroll down a little bit, there's been some, you know, people that have been moved into different spots. You can see some of the, the different things that have happened there. I think as you continue to scroll down, you'll see that Carrie has some of her, the people that she has in the instructional coaches and the model teachers, she's got those pretty much lined up in there, so that's
We're missing one.
We're just missing one, technology innovator at the elementary level.
Okay, thank you, Carrie. Grade level leaders, you can see that she has those in there too. So we're missing a tech innovator. Anything else that you got there, Gail? Oh, she just had some
It's me.
It was something. I, I guess if you have any questions on it, I don't want to necessarily read them to you, but
Okay. Any questions? Any changes in open enrollment that wasn't in the other handout?
No, I think you have it there. I think those are pretty much slam dugs.
And actually, these two students were on November, October, November, if they sound familiar. They were from Ames to Boone, now back to Ames.
Fundraisers.
Did you guys, did we say something about a fundraiser? Go ahead. Did you wanna, did you wanna add something?
On the final day of school, our final, on that half day, we're doing a run, and we're doing it for the hospital, and just, gonna be a fundraiser, so I know that was added on there for June 1st.
Is that in Gilbert?
Yes, it's gonna take
Are you gonna run?
I will now.
What's the show title?
It's Dell's Dash for Trash and Miles for Smiles. So it's, part of the day is a service around town, and then the other part of the day is a fun run at school to raise money for Blaine Showman Hospital.
Anything else as far as fundraisers that we?
Intermediates doing the postcard booklet. They fill out five addresses, we get $5. And that's, has replaced our target money that we used to get that paid for out of our yearly recess. Reasonable one, that's all they produce if they want to.
Anything else that's out there?
Entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Some.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
And approved, calendar, we have, is June, well, it's gonna work for everyone for our regular board meeting.
Where's the main?
Carrie, do we wanna grab, okay. One of the things, and not to be, make it uncomfortable for Chris sitting here, but we're gonna be looking at trying to get some of our we've, we've talked about interviewing for his position. So what we're looking at is, I think I sent you out the school board update and told it the timeframe. So the 22nd is the date that we're looking at doing interviews, and we would know of May. And we'd like to get two board members, if they could, that would be able to, to be a part of that. Our goal is, and I don't know if we'll be able to do it, but our goal is to try to get the interviews done in that day. I think, I don't know what we had in, now, that isn't important. But my point is that we would like to have someone that could be here, will probably take, what did we say? What time did we say? 11?
11 to maybe 4.
What's for lunch? I'm in.
I don't know, we'll plan that for you.
Let's do it. I'd love to do it.
Got you down.
Mr. Riff, Chris, you got some good referrals for us in your peer groups?
I do.
Okay, great.
I've already talked to them.
Awesome.
Mr. Riff, I'm in.
Yeah, I would like to try to make that.
Can we have more, we can, can we have more than us?
If you go more than two, you're gonna have a
We have 10 announcements, so I'll, that's fine.
I'll get more information out to you, but is there anything else under that plan that we talked about on Friday that
Just to kind of give a general idea, so we, we made a fairly short turnaround. So our, our close date is Sunday, which we already have 22 applicants, so we're doing well. And then we will do some prelim interviews early next week, so we'll kind of go through our, our pool, and then we'll do those initial interviews, and then from there, we'll schedule those to come in on the, on the 22nd.
And the initial interview is like Skyping or phone, a phone, like as long, yeah, it's just a screener.
I think I shared with you too, we got, we're gonna have some students that will be involved, we're gonna have different, some different groups, some staff, board, administration. I think you had that information in there too, but anything else that you guys can think of on that? I didn't want to forget that. 22nd.
And without naming, are there any internal candidates?
I believe that we do have some, yes.
Any other calendar items that you have to If not, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Some.
I'll move.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Please stand adjourned.
Alright, thank you.